Call to order, a meeting of the North Andover School Committee, March 5th, 2015, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to just remind people that the meeting is being recorded, and respectfully ask that you silence or turn off any cell devices. We will begin first with public comment for agenda items only. We have a public, but no public comment. Okay. There's no recognition tonight? And the student, Nick and Nicole are not here, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm ahead of schedule.
I'm ahead of schedule, all right? Very good.
It's a good night.
If I could actually ask the committee to entertain this, we have some guests tonight regarding the old business, which is the second reading in the approval of a proposed private high school within North Andover. I would like to take that out of order.
No objection?
All right. So, I'm just scrolling on here, hold on. No, I've got it right here, sorry. I thought it was further down the list. All right. So, just a little bit of quick background. This is in accordance with state law, let the school committee approve the private high school when we are satisfied that it meets or is equal to the town's public school through thoroughness, efficiency, and progress.
So, in order to bring this up, do you need a motion?
We do.
So, Mr. Chair, move to approve and review and approve the proposed American Muslim Preparatory Academy as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right.
Just to be clear, in other words, this is the curriculum for the...
Program of Studies basically.
Right. Okay. Any discussion?
So, I amend the motion appropriately. It's to, thank you, Mr. Limper, to approve the curriculum.
Not the school.
Not the school, correct.
Okay.
The packet is it, correct.
All right. Any discussion?
Do you have a presentation or anything?
We discussed, well, we discussed it last time. So, they're... Welcome to come and introduce themselves.
Well, I guess my feeling is, you know, I'm not sure of the genesis of this law, but it seems kind of silly to me that they're asking, the state's asking us to approve the curriculum when, you know, we just have a, you know, an eight-page... Are we qualified to do this? I mean, I know the national law asks us to do it, but...
I met with the group.
Okay.
We had a very good discussion. They did some revisions based on the conversation. When they came back, I reviewed it again. Dr. Scuzzarella reviewed it from a high school perspective, because it's a high school. And we had that discussion last time, where it seems a little odd that you, the role of the school committee is to approve it, and then it's total hands-off after that, but that's what it's asked for.
It's the same process when St. Mike's and other schools came to...
Any school comes.
I understand that. I just think it's kind of odd, that's all.
We all agree.
We agree with you.
Only we need some state reps.
I know, so do I. I don't hold this law as fond as I could have voted for it.
Yeah, really? You'll have to check that.
We should talk to our legislators.
But, I mean, in all honesty, I mean, it's been in the newspaper, I think, obviously we received, you know, a couple of emails about it. I don't think it would hurt to, I guess, have the proponents come forward and talk about what they want to do here, you know? Do they have a location? Are they going to be someplace in the town? I mean, I think people want to know about it, that's all.
Okay.
Please. Yeah, come on in.
My name is Teymul Abdul-Ahram, man, and I would be the principal of the school. And I wanted to thank, on behalf of myself and my colleagues, I'm a little nervous. I would like to thank Dr. Hutchinson and the committee and the town of North Andover for this platform. So, right now, we don't have a location. We're still in the process of looking, we're working with a real estate agent, and we're looking for a location. We're still gathering some faculty members and interviewing and following that protocol. But I would like to say that, you know, the reason why this is so important to us is because we know that Massachusetts has a very rich relationship and complicated relationship with religion. We take our big brothers, the Catholics, as an example. We know that in the 17th century, it was illegal to practice Catholicism in Massachusetts. And due to the likes of, in my modest studies of some of the faith leaders of the past, like Bishop Benedict Fenwick, who threw his newspaper in the 19th century called The Pilot, he was able to dispel some of the myths about Catholicism by being patient and clarifying what the religion believed and what its followers intended. And also through the efforts of bishops John Williams and John Fitzpatrick, I learned so many valuable lessons about how through faithful engagement and civic duty and social service, that you can actually befriend and create a fellowship through your religion and through other people that actually speaks to your core values, everyone's core values. So, I think the most important lesson I've learned is that those who are considered strangers should take an effort to friendship, create some friendship and some dialogue and some fellowship in order to engage their community. And I hope that American Muslim Preparatory Academy would be that conduit for North Andover and for the greater larger Massachusetts community. We hope that this would be a way that we could show the community the great tolerance and historical forbearance of Islam, the true Islam. I'm an American, born American, and I'm proud to live in a country and grateful to live in a place where I can practice my faith with no persecution. And in addition to a rigorous academic curriculum, we would like to also teach love of country as one of our main ethos. And I think this is missing as one of the main pillars of some of the Islamic institutions. So, these are our core values, and we can't do it without the help of the people of North Andover and, of course, the committee. So, we're hoping to get a vote in the positive so we can start the process along further and in the spirit of brotherhood and democracy.
Do you have any questions?
So, the way I understand the law, we need to vote on this because you're locating in North Andover?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
Because we may, you may, in any other town...
If they were to find a location in another town, they'd have to go through the St. Francis and another town.
Right.
Well, as I'm asking, is this premature at this point? I mean, you don't have a location in North Andover yet. For all you know, you may not find one.
Right.
You may find one in Andover, Lawrence, Methuen.
Right. But I guess, I guess it's just a matter of, are we putting the cart before the horse or the horse, horse before the cart? We debated on whether, should we get a building before we had approval, or do we get approval and then search for a building? We imagined that the approval would be more difficult and more rigorous, so we decided to wait kind of until we talked to Dr. Hutchinson.
Yeah. Well, with the real estate market, you know, I think that sometimes it can be more difficult than getting approval here, because I think, you know, this process, to me, is new.
Yes.
I don't think anyone's ever had a vote on something like this before. So, I have some concerns about that, whether we're voting on something that's premature, you don't have a location yet.
Right.
Where would you see recruiting students from? Would this be a boarding school? Is this...
So, this is a private...
Affiliated with another organization or another college or, tell me how it works?
Okay. So, actually, I am a full-time teacher now, a middle school teacher at the Islamic Academy for Peace in Methuen, which is a private school. And I'm also a spiritual advisor at Northeastern University. And we wouldn't be actually affiliated with them, but the hopes is that we will fulfill a need for the parents and the children who are leaving the eighth grade and don't have a place to go to continue the same theme. So, there would be students recruited from everywhere, from, you know, New Hampshire all the way down to Burlington and PBD. This is why North Andover is such an ideal place, because it's kind of right in the middle. And we're also hoping that through our ethics and discipline and morality, we can attract, you know, children from the community eventually.
So, you said you teach at a school in Methuen?
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about that a little bit? Look, where do most of the students come from?
Absolutely. So, we have a large Turkish community, Moroccan, Indo-Pakistani, everywhere from Salem, Massachusetts, Salem, New Hampshire, to Burlington and Wilmington, Lexington. They come from all of these different places, professionals, blue-collar workers. And I personally teach fourth grade through eighth grade Islamic sciences, Islamic theology, and just basic jurisprudence on, you know, what we do to pray and things like this.
All-day students?
Yes, sir. So, they also, they also have a curriculum that matches the common core in terms of English language arts, history, mathematics, and, you know...
What about transportation? Do you pay for the transportation or are the local communities responsible for transportation?
No, sir. Right now, the local community has to transport their children.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you mean the parents?
The parents. I'm sorry, the parents. The parents transport their children, yes.
Okay.
If it were an elementary school, we'd be responsible for it, just like we do for St. Mike's. But high school, we're not.
But high school, you will not be. So, you don't see any kind of local or state funds being used for the school right now?
No, sir.
So, how do you, I mean, you charge a certain tuition, or is it all private foundations? Or how does it...
Right. So, the school is run by a school committee of founders, basically. I'm just, I'm an employee. But the model is that we raise funds throughout the year through donations, through fundraising dinners, through fundraising drives, and through tuition. We pay salaries.
Well, as you can imagine, I mean, it's raised a lot of curiosity, because I don't think a lot of people know, you know, I wasn't aware of this law myself, and a lot of people, since it's on the paper, have reached out and said, "What's this all about?"
Right. Absolutely.
Doesn't happen very often.
No, I was gonna say.
Private schools open.
But I'm sure, you know, like someone mentioned, when Brook School opened in 1925, '26, if this law was in the books, they'd have to go to the St. Francis.
There's different groups up there then. St. Mike's in '50.
In '50? A little before my time, not that old. I have no further questions.
Thank you, sir.
So, I have a quick question. How many students are in the Methuen school?
We have about...
About 150.
150?
Yes.
And what do you envision the size of the school here to be?
I imagine it would eventually grow to be probably 150 or more, because I know that there's a lot of students, and my colleague maybe can speak more to this than me, she's been in that institution longer than myself. But there's a lot of students who have had to kind of, you know, assimilate into other high schools, because there wasn't, there wasn't a Muslim high school to facilitate.
Okay. And how long has that school been operating?
Twelve, 13 years now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And you mentioned you're looking forward to collaboration or citizenship opportunities. Can you describe a little more what you had in mind?
Well, first and foremost, we are, we just solidified a program with Northern Essex Community College for dual enrollment for 10th and 11th, 11th and 12th graders. So, this is the first community engagement we would like. But also, we would like to work with some of the local city councilors and figure out how we can integrate ourselves. I'm on the board of a group called Kids for Peace, which works with different people from different religions, getting them together so that the children can fellowship. So, we would like to find out some of these opportunities that exist locally with some of the synagogues and churches, where we can get involved with programs that mutually benefit our youth.
Do you have any of those existing in Methuen?
In Methuen, no, right now, because I'm actually, again, I'm an employee and not, not in charge.
I see. I see. I guess a question for Dr. Hutchinson. When you reviewed the curriculum, getting back to the, what appears to be our responsibility, are lesson plans in existence, or are these more course objectives and...
No, this is a program of studies, just like the high school presents or informs you every year. And it, that's what we compare to, and what are the requirements from the state. Lesson plans come from the teacher doing the course, and that's not something they have in place yet, but that's not something that has to be approved.
Okay. So, based on your interpretation of what it is that we need to...
Yep, absolutely.
Need to approve here.
Yep.
It is a comparable curriculum?
Absolutely.
Okay. I go for the questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Warren?
Yep.
Mrs. Limper?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. So, Zara, we've got a motion?
Yep. We'd have corrected motion.
Corrected motion, all right. So, all in favor of approving the American Muslim Preparatory Academy?
Course of study.
Course of study. Thank you. And I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Terese?
Yes.
Mrs. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Limper?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I think a couple suggestions.
Yes.
I think, you know, whenever you enter a new community...
Yes.
You know, especially where there's a lot of misconceptions, and I think, I'm just trying to phrase it the right way, but I think it'd be beneficial, once you get a location and you get more sense of when you're going to be up and running, to come back to this committee or even to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
And keep people informed, because people tend to form opinions that are not really based in reality. And the more information you share about your school, your program, your curriculum, I think the better off it's gonna be.
Absolutely.
So, when you get that location and you know how many people you're gonna have in your school, just better, good to check. I know there's no legal requirement for you to do so, but I would say...
No, but that advice is profound.
It should be important for the community.
Absolutely.
Thank you, good luck.
We will do that. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, committee.
Good luck.
Thank you. And you're not required to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Unless you have a problem sleeping. Yeah.
All right. We're gonna jump back to the consent agenda. We voted last week regarding the executive session minutes, but Mr. Terese was not here, and I believe there were...
Four or seven.
Three or four, yeah, okay. Four of the seven that you were on the committee for.
Right.
So, we wanted to make sure if you had any edits or modifications.
No, no. I think they were all well documented, and I don't know if you need to re-vote, but they're fine as I view.
Okay. I don't think we need to re-vote. We did say we would, if we needed to, we would bring it up, so I think we can now release. Okay.
Thank you.
The chairman's report, I actually...
We have minutes in our packet, we need a vote, right?
No.
No.
No, because we've already voted them.
The last meetings are not done yet.
Yeah, it was just if Mr. Terese had a issue to comment on.
And if I did, how, will we actually unvote that?
Yeah.
We'd have to figure that out.
I don't.
Everybody's glad it happened.
We could reset that vote.
Do the polls? We would have to, we should make a poll. We would have crossed that bridge there. Chairman's report, the only thing that I have is really, I know that Mr. Limper has a comment on a meeting that he attended this week. It's been about six days since my last meeting, so I won't steal all of yours like I did last week. All right. Mrs. Limper?
Out of idle or morbid curiosity, I attended candidates' night, last night in Andover to see what their selectmen candidates and their school committee candidates would say. And two issues relative to North Andover were raised, how well we did with our youth center and not having to add bodies, add people to run it once we built it. So, they were saying, "Why can't we do the same?" And secondly, there was a little discussion of streetlights and how come those guys could do the right thing and buy their streetlights and not have to pay for them. So, I thought that was two interesting comments. And on the school committee side, one of the candidates said, that made a statement about the fact that North Andover had just selected an outstanding new superintendent, and he was looking forward to their school committee and their school district working with her and our school district to try to collaborate and do some good things. So, that was interesting.
All right.
Might have been 45.
All right. Dr. Hutchinson?
Just a couple of things to keep in mind before I transition into the two points there. One, a number of schools have been doing the Read Across America this week. It's always a pleasure to be there, to engage with the students. Most importantly, it's great to see members of the community there, town manager, police chief, fire chief. I think at Franklin the other day, there were half a dozen policemen as well, some who are fathers of some of the kids there. So, it's always a great time when the community comes together, the kids get to meet people they don't know who they are or what they do half the time. So, and they actually thought our budget was about $10,000 a year. So, fourth grade today. So, it's a good time for the, not just for the read, but also to help the kids understand more about what everybody does in the community. So, that's been going really well. We're great to see that. I did talk to Jen for a bit today regarding, and that point that Mr. Limper brought up, camp up as well. And we were talking about how to, within our strategic planning this year, moving into next, try to incorporate some of the thoughts she has into the strategic initiatives we already have in place, particularly the curriculum and resources piece, because she's really interested in building partnerships, not only with other, with other school systems, but with other organizations to help provide more resources to the schools. So, that was a really good conversation, and we'll continue to follow up on it. Before we go into the professional development presentation, there's been a lot of talk in the newspapers and through the governor's office of implications for next year especially, there were some of the cuts that occurred this year. What it's looking like right now is that our increase in Chapter 70 would be about $660,000, which is substantial. Of course, there's no guarantee to this, it has to go through everything. However, it's also proposed that the kindergarten grants are totally eliminated, and that the total of that is about $18 million. And what they do is they'll probably shift that into the Chapter 70 piece. The impact on us would be $135,000 for, as far as compared to this year, but with this possibility of making up for it on the other side. So, it's not as drastic for us as it is for some of the communities, but it's about shifting the monies around.
So, are there other grants that were proposed?
The only other grant is the, Dr. Scuzzarella knows this one, is it the summer MCAS? It's not called Summer MCAS Grant. Carly, won't come up?
At the high school level, we get an entitlement grant from the state for support for MCAS for students who are either ninth graders and haven't taken the sophomore test yet, or we've also had the opportunity to take some of that money and put it aside for the summer. It is a separate grant number, but it's part of our entitlement grants. So, typically, I've put money aside for the summer instead of taking our full amount. And about three weeks ago, I got an email saying the summer money was cut, which is frustrating, because that's a very strong program.
And what's the amount, Carla, that you'd say aside?
I usually put $3,000 aside, and then what has happened the last four years is districts that don't use their full-year entitlement, somewhere around April vacation, early May, an email goes out to all of the districts that have taken their grant and says, "There's additional money available if you'd like to apply for it, you can apply for up to this." So, for the last three summers, we've gotten anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000 on top of the three. And that's enabled us to run our MCAS bootcamp for free at no cost for the kids, and some of our other programs that support our students. So, it's really disappointing that that money is gone now, because we got, I think I mentioned this before, our MCAS grant actually was cut, everybody's was cut. But we lost probably about $7,000 out of what we averaged over the last few years. So, we already were lower, and I was already pinching pennies to put the money aside, and now it's gone. So, we'll figure it out, but it's disappointing, and that's the only thing that I knew about besides the kindergarten, that was it.
So, is it 10, 7 and 3? $10,000?
Well, is it, 3 is out of your discretion, right?
3 was what I normally budgeted, and then I would get to apply for additional money. And so, now, my 3 is gone, and I'm sure there won't be any additional money.
Yeah. I mean, it's not as drastic, again, it's not as drastic as other communities. We are, we will continue to follow the kindergarten piece, but also to examine how offset it is. One thing about the kindergarten, the kindergarten was about expanding full-day kindergarten. That was the purpose of the grant. So, it may be very fortuitous that we now have free full-day kindergarten.
Right.
And therefore, we now have, according to state formula, since we can count the kindergarten students as full-time, it adds that amount through Chapter 70.
And that's not being proposed to change?
No.
No, that's being fully funded.
It's being fully funded, so...
I'm sorry, when we did our cost model in support of going to full-day J, was that grant included in the ROI?
It was, it was, yes.
Okay.
It was, it was expected that that would continue. Yeah. So, we're gonna have to examine what kind of adjustments we may have to make. And we're getting, we're gathering some data on that now, so, especially from comparative data from other districts. That may take about another two weeks to complete that.
Dr. Hutchinson, the last time we had an issue like this with the state, five or six years ago, circuit breaker was also cut, fairly dramatically. Is there any anticipation while they're doing something good in Chapter 70, that they're gonna do something?
There's always possibility, because that's what they tend to do. It looked like circuit breaker would be level funded at the 15 level, FY15 level.
Okay. So, is it 72% or something like that?
Yeah, but that means the percent tends to go, well...
Level.
The, yeah.
I think everyone knows this, but as the budget process goes on, the House will take it up in April and then the Senate in May. As it gets further down the line, they'll have better numbers to know, to play with. I mean, I think the governor's budget was based on, you know, just January numbers, and, you know, February revenue numbers were up, you know, quite a bit, from benchmark at least. So, you know, it's tough to say they had major issues, I'll read about it in the paper, but I would say, you know, this is just the starting point, and there are no guarantees that, there could be other cuts coming down the line.
Yeah. And they keep us pretty good.
Right.
The Superintendent Association, as well as Business Association, as well as the School Committee Association, they're all on top of it.
Got a flood of emails on this.
Yes, yeah.
Listen, sir.
Just, but just so it's clear in my mind, we're really talking, what we're really talking about is this year, FY15, while the governor's just submitted his FY16 budget, right?
We've been talking about the cut that we experienced for this year, is the $30,000 in kindergarten.
Okay.
That was the only cut that's affecting us beyond what Carla did.
But at least, sort of like me, what I read in the newspapers, it doesn't sound like the budget that the governor's proposed is an overly glowing budget either.
No, no.
It's pretty much a belt-tightening kind of...
It depends where they put, as far as impacting us, it depends where they put the money, where they finally decide to shift it.
Where they take it from is really the issue for us.
Mr. She's, let me ask you a question. What, you know, at the local level, what we've always debated and wondered about is the revenue projection, not so much the expense projection, you know? So, the Revenue and Fixed Costs Committee here locally meets, and they come up with some number, and that starts our budgeting process. How does the state do that? How do they project their revenue numbers, like for the FY16 budget, when they start this budgeting process?
They started that process back in December, when they have all the economists come in, they present in front of, you know, the House Ways and Means Chair and the Senate Ways and Means Chair and A and F. Now, this is, this was a different year, where you didn't have an A and F secretary in place at that point, you didn't have a Senate Ways and Means Chairman in place at that point. So, I think the revenue hearing was just held, you know, at the end of January. You know, they're, they're guessing like everyone else. You know, they're guessing like everyone else. I mean, they have indicators, but, you know, they benchmark, like I just said, February, what I read today on State House News Service was, you know, February revenue numbers were, you know, I think 10 or 12% above benchmark. So, you know, it's like anything else. Sometimes big settlements come in, you know, that amnesty, a tax amnesty program. This year, I'm understanding is they're going to do it again next year, so.
Are those?
The Senate budget will be, well, I'll say the best budget. It'll be the most accurate budget because they'll have more numbers, good numbers to play with. I mean, it's not, the governor's budget's always the least informed because it has the least amount of data at the time that they formulate it.
Are they, when they do the revenue projections, are those typically conservative? Are they more on the conservative side?
That's always the battle between the three different branches of which revenue estimate to use. I would say historically that the House and the governor tend to be more conservative than the Senate. The Senate tends to want to spend more money.
Yeah, but their budget is later too.
Their budget, but generally speaking, when those budgets are formed, there's an agreement in principle that they're going to base it on the same revenue number.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on, you may have noticed we have a pretty good size audience today. Most of them are presenters though.
It's all relative.
So.
Paid attention.
So I'd like to introduce Mr. Gilligan to introduce our presentation we have put together tonight around what we've been doing around professional development at all three levels.
Well, this is exciting. I don't think we've talked about this in a couple meetings, so the real important stuff.
Excuse me?
You're talking a couple of. That's true too.
That's the exciting part.
Yeah. This is really, I mean, this is why we all exist, is to teach kids. And we're really happy to have a great group here tonight to talk about professional development. We've got our curriculum coordinators for humanities and STEM, Mary Gregoire and Kara Lockham are here, Principal Lantry from the Atkinson, Principal Scuzzarella from the high school, Principal Clark from the Franklin, and just a wave from the other folks. We've got Mr. Saletti from the middle school, Mr. Wrigley from the middle school, Mr. Richard, no S at the end, from the middle school, Ms. Dealey from the high school, Ms. Caffrey's Wingy from the high school as well. And I don't think I missed anyone. So we're really thrilled to come tonight and talk a little bit about what's been happening with professional development this year in terms of facilitated vertical and horizontal collaboration across grade levels, across, also across grade spans in schools, as well as the work we've done at looking at student work, best practices, rigor and critical thinking, which lead us up to really getting a curriculum, which is ongoing work all the time, more aligned and improve student learning. So I'm going to ask those folks if they could come on up and grab a seat. And there's different parts and we have some Mary and Kara coming up now. And we'll have some other folks chiming in, right? I anticipate this about 15 minutes or so and, you know, then the like would really depend on questions, so.
So on our first slide, we've put together a chart and we wanted you to see how the, it's an ongoing cycle of curriculum involving all schools and the facilitators, the teachers to improve student work. So what I'm going to talk about first is the vision of the north end of a school district and it's, you know, to prepare all students for both career and college and to be the best well-rounded students they possibly can be. So going from that to the theory of action, we're looking at a standards-based curriculum that we've developed and the assessments that go along with that and how we're using that to work with collaboration, to look at best practice, to look at student work and to just help the students with improved student learning all the way through. So then this goes on to our two initiatives that we, that you presented, PP2 and EM1. And that's been the focus of the whole year. The PP2 involves the facilitation that's been going on that deals with both the collaboration and under the collaboration, it's looking at student work and looking at data. So what does our student work tell us? What is our data tell us? What decisions can we make from the data and the student work to improve instruction and to provide intervention where needed? And also involved with this is sharing best practice. So when we have these collaborative groups working together and we see what is working through our data or what is working through our student, looking at student work, the person that's done that can say, this is what worked, this was great, and we're sharing it across the whole grade levels. So that's basically been our PP2. And then the EM1 is involving critical thinking. So our whole focus this year is look at the highest. We want the best from our students. And the understanding is that if we get them to think critically at all levels, then we're going to reach the highest level possible. So we've looked at, we've talked about it before, the web's depth of knowledge was, which is like Bloom's taxonomy. And we've applied that to both our assessments. So are our assessments looking for critical thinking? Are teacher practice, when teachers are instructing, are they instructing with questions that are going to make the students like reach their highest potential, et cetera? So between the facilitation, the collaboration and the critical thinking, it's kind of like a cyclical approach that we're meeting all our needs together. So that's the first part of the diagram.
So as Mary mentioned, all of those, the vision, the theory of action and those strategic initiatives helped us develop the plan for the year and move forward. So in your packet, it has some of the details to our professional development plan with really, again, a focus on collaboration, not just horizontally within grade levels, but cross grade spans as well as between different buildings. In each of those levels, teachers are looking at student work and data to inform their practice, describing different best practice strategies that they're using in their classroom. And as Mary mentioned, the critical thinking piece, really examining how we're getting students to think critically beyond just straight facts and information. So this, all these different components help us to align our curriculum K-12 and improve student learning in the long run. We've worked with the facilitators, so there were 22 new facilitators this year throughout the levels. And we worked with them in a course this fall to discuss strategies of facilitation and best practice, as well as web's DOK, again, to use as a tool to examine rigor and increasing Through these different discussions at all levels, our hope again is that we're continually revising curriculum and instruction strategies to make it more aligned throughout the district and looking at student learning and how we can impact and improve student learning.
Okay. So from that point on, we're going to break it down to the different levels and how each of the levels has operated. So this is more of the nuts and the bolts of the whole procedure. And basically for the, we're going to first talk about the K-5. And so the district-wide professional development, the staff from all five elementary schools met together on a number of occasions at the Atkinson School. And then the remainder of the professional development days were building base. So there's been a combination of two-hour meetings where people all met together either grade level or as a whole group at the elementary, or the individual days within the schools themselves. So they've had a combination of the two.
Let this point out, Mary, that for those who don't know about the two-hour, we're able to, on the early release days where we meet like grade one, every grade one across the district at Atkinson, we've tacked on the faculty meeting as well to make it a two-hour block.
And so then we've broken this down to what the math and the English have done, ELA. So in the ELA section in the elementary schools, we've discussed the gradual release model for literacy and we've shared reading assessments throughout. We've established a common language for the literacy block so that when all the teachers are talking, we're using the same language and the students are hearing the same thing from K through five. We examined, we looked at the common core and the challenging aspects of the common core related to ELA and how we can pull them apart. We discussed vertical alignment with the ELA standards. And in addition to that, each of the grade levels has met with the grade above and the grade below to talk about what are our expectations coming in and what are expectations coming out so that people have the discussion so we're all on the same page. And then the fifth and sixth grade collaborated on writing assignments. So January, there were some days in January and some days in March where the fifth graders went over to the middle school and then this week as well, and they shared their writing. So they had a time to talk, a fifth grader talked to the sixth grader, they both shared their writing, their expectations, and then they also had some time to kind of like have any kind of questions about the fifth graders to the sixth graders, what's it like? So it eases their transition into middle school as well. Matt?
So on the math topics, teachers have worked on aligning the scoring of their math common assessment so that when we're looking at data across the district, there's consistency. They've also reviewed components of the math block and there have been a lot of professional development the last few years related to that. So we did a little refresher for new teachers as well as teachers in the district to remind them of some of those best practice components. And then much like the ELA standards, teachers met with the grade above and below them to discuss the math standards and levels of expectation coming into and leaving each So there's many commonalities across all of the elementary schools and the different components that they've worked on on their hour release days, including working on the professional learning communities, grade level meetings, looking at data and assessment to improve instruction strategies and target and develop best practice in different areas of need. They've looked at high needs populations and developed student success plans for them. And then the technology specialists have also helped with Google Apps training to get teachers using more technology in the classroom and more comfort level with Google Apps.
I'm going to invite elementary principals.
Principals, to add just a few examples or details.
Well, I don't have too much to add, you know me from the Atkinson, right? I just have to say, the evolution of the roles that these two women have taken on this year has been great. It's been something different from what the experience has been in my other seven years here. It's been always on Gillie or Hutch before him to really make the PD work at the elementary level. And it's always been pretty strong, but not as strong as it's been this year. The coordination's outstanding.
Wow. Good job.
Really, it's made a difference. You know, that's, it's the truth because what's been nice is the ability to connect so many different things in so many different ways. What we do at the district level and the surveys we've each done at our own school level and then try to bring those things together when we have a building base day or when we have a district day. It's been special.
And what I found great, coming as you all know, I used to teach at the Atkinson under a phenomenal principal. Being able to have this more consistent meeting time, we can talk about, and we can look at student work in a more real-time manner as opposed to just once a month. We can talk about, we're talking about best practices, we're looking at the common core, we're unpacking those standards, we're having like Karen and Mary, we're speaking about, we're having those vertical conversations so that K-1 and 2 teachers are working together. What are you doing to hit this standard? How are you doing? What strategies are you using? All right, let's try all this. A week later, we get to come back and say, what worked? What didn't work? How can we adjust it? Like where is this best practice? And being able to have those consistent conversations and connecting it to the work that Mary and Kara are having us do as a whole district, being able to bring that back. This is what we're doing in Franklin. What are you doing in Atkinson? What are you doing in Sargent? So we're really looking at that north end of our education and we're getting there in a more consistent and convenient way, really.
And it's happening by design. You know, we used to have to beg, borrow and steal to find time for common planning or blocks where we could free up teachers during the day. The frequency and the design of this is really what, and the work that all the facilitators and the coordinators are doing, that makes the difference.
It's a pretty extensive list that, you know, to cover in six months' time. We almost lost a month because of the snow, so. We feel good about it.
Quick question? So with all this collaboration, all the good things that are coming out of it, how does that get documented? How do people preserve that, you know, so that others can look at it later or get some benefit from that?
Well, there was a reference to the high needs population and success plans. Our guidance councils at the elementary level work a lot with the teachers to get that documentation in place, especially if the children need extra support, we try to get that in place.
But I'm thinking more of Dr.'s, you know, good teaching practices that somebody has used and other people could benefit from.
We're building resources together as far as what's been working well in classrooms. That's been gathered by the facilitators at each of these meetings district-wide and we're actually building a resource, online binder.
So we've been able to share it and as I think is mentioned in one of the tech plans of before, you know, we've been able to create a, with the reading coaches, a literacy site for, depository for all of the best assessments, the best practice. And as I think Mike might have been here, or I may have mentioned it, we're working on with Mike to develop a Google Plus or a Google Hangout or something along those lines so that we'll be able to do the same thing with all of our lessons across. And it's just a much more efficient and timely manner for teachers to be able to go to that rather than traditionally teaches, and they can all speak to it, these guys have binders upon binders upon binders, but as technology improves, we're getting less binders and more real time, so.
Quick question. This is fabulous and it's great to see the focus on exactly what appears to be really indicated. If you want to improve something, you have to measure it and you can imagine the question is what are our benchmarks for the PP objective and the PP2 objective and how are we doing relative to those measures?
I know one of them was to present the plan and what we're doing to you all, so tiny piece tonight. I have to look back at some of the pieces. I know we, as has been mentioned, we've been collecting, you know, the data to look and see, starting to develop some of those strategies across the district and again, with the use of technology to collect that. We've been doing some surveys at each professional development, collecting data, what are things that teachers have learned from the different professional development, some strategies that they've developed and taken back to their classroom and things like that, so.
I can also follow up. I don't have with me? I can follow up on that next, at the next meeting. I can bring those, specific to the work we've done with the pilot in the state, I can bring those next time.
That'd be helpful. I mean, I believe in the theory of action, but it'd be great to see that this is impacting the theory.
And you won't be surprised to hear that Mr. Gross and I often say, process, we love process. We're in a process. Output, we also write output. So it's like, so how are we doing on the output side? And that's kind of our.
I think one of the earliest indicators is us being able to document and keep a record of, in Google Apps and with these new sites, things at an actual spot that they don't disappear when new teachers come in and we can refresh them on this. And then as we go, continue to look at that data so that we know if we have to make any mid-course corrections and those types of things.
How about the stuff that we can't measure as easily? Like are our parents happy with this? Can they see the communication between grades? Do they feel like there's a continuity there? And how do you get feedback on that? Because, I mean, the test scores, sometimes we get all wrapped up in it, but at the end of the day, the parents have got to feel comfortable that their student is progressing well through that school and they feel the teachers get them.
I had a meeting today at the library, Stevens Library with Marina Salinas, who was the children's librarian and Kathleen Keenan, and we were just talking about that. And they had, Dr. Price was there and she's, they said to me, there were about 45 families that were present at that meeting and they were talking about the curriculum days that we've had and that what they were saying was the outpouring of the parents' response to all this was really positive, that they felt that they could see, they were really excited about what was coming home. So that was just one, that was just an incident today where somebody was talking about that to me. So I don't know if that's, you know, that's just a conversation.
That's the kind of feedback that I think is important because at the day, those are your customers.
Right.
And an example of that, we didn't do it this year, but we did it last year, was part of our initiatives was to create the user-friendly curriculum guides for families and they, so that we just developed the trifolds. And that was an example. It's simple and it's very direct and they were available at every school. I think we put them out, Gillie was passing out some today to somebody.
I had some nice copies today for the, not at market basket, for the kindergarten night, you know, and parents really like that, especially parents new to the district that might not know and they go to the teaching and learning section of the website and there's guides from K to 8. And then the high school has not only the program of studies night, but they have the overviews for every single subject they have at the high school. And if you're really interested and want to dig a little deeper, if you go to Gilligan's gems on the teaching and learning, there's a update, mid-year update on some of the stuff we do on half-days as well, which is really all this stuff here, so.
Quick question. So I was actually speaking to some parents earlier and I think there was a bit of a challenge in getting people to understand and respond to the one-hour early releases. So now I think people are kind of getting a little more used to it and the reminders from Dr. Hutchinson kind of help with all that. But I think they're still struggling a little bit with seeing families in one class, for example, are doing things completely different in other classes. And then they talk to somebody on the baseball field or the basketball court and down the road at another school, they're not even doing anything similar. So when we have scenarios like that, what do our families need to be doing? Do they need to try to reach out to individual teachers? Do they need to be going to the principals? Do they need to be bringing that to you? Because I hear that, I don't want to say often, but enough.
I think it's always good to talk to the principal because oftentimes they may just hear a snippet of what's going on. You know, the other day, we were at the sergeant's school doing administrative walkthroughs and I was amazed at the work they were doing around persuasive writing at one grade level. Now, it took shape in some different forms, but the, you know, the core of that lesson was taking place, you know? So I think it's always important to talk to the principals in situations like that. Hutch, you have any other?
I think it should start with the teacher.
Yeah.
And then it goes to principal because a lot of the times, especially if you're listening to your child, they have a certain perspective. And it's good to listen to your children, but of course, they have fairly narrow perspectives sometimes as far as, well, we just did this and somebody did a different activity. You could do two different activities to teach the same concept. And so that's why, and a lot of times it's depending upon choices the teacher makes in order to respond to the needs of that class that's in front of them. So, and that's why you want to talk to the teacher at first and then if you're still having this feeling, then you should move to the principal and have that discussion.
But it is, it is true that, I mean, if we looked at across all elementary school classes at any given grade level, they might all be doing something different on any given day because of the teacher or the class or something else. So, you know, if two parents talked about what their kids did today from two different schools, they might have a different speech and it would sound like things weren't coordinated, but they could very well be.
And Stan, that's the data piece, like so one class might. And Stan, that's the data piece, like, so one class might get eighty percent, uh, right off the bat from an assessment. You know that you don't have to spend more than a day covering this where you might find in another class, that particular concept is tough for that class and they may spend more, a little more time.
That's also why the, the significance of common assessments, because that means the assessment is what's common to all teachers in all classrooms in that grade level.
Right.
Um, and that helps us keep honest, but also we have stepped, because that should be responsive. What do we want students to normally be able to do? The common assessment. And that's how we judge the effectiveness of our instructional practice.
I'm not talking about, you know, just, you know, somebody did this on Monday and it's, you know, the, the other kids in the other class didn't do that on Monday and why didn't they do it on Monday? I mean, that, that's, I'm talking about this week, next week, I'm hearing they haven't even done anything with that. Um, you know, whether it's science or, you know, just different pieces and, and I know that, you know, it's really kind of not the English and the math pieces that are out there, but it is a concern that I think parents have, um, and I hear about it again just on the field. So it, I'm, I'm not trying to say, you know, every Monday has to be exactly the same. I mean, that, that can't possibly be the one.
If people have concerns, we do need to hear about those.
Okay.
And, and as far as the school's concerned, sometimes, I mean, it's always best to go to the teacher so they can clarify. Then it's good to go to the principal because they know what's going on in the school. Principals, if they're hearing these things, they're talking to each other and, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we can help parents understand it as well. Because sometimes it's just confusion based on what, so this person heard versus what that person heard, so. We, we want, it's important to hear those things because, so that we can clear them up or address them.
Okay.
So teacher first. Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yep. So thank you for coming tonight and presenting. We appreciate it. A couple of things, as I was, as I was listening to you talk, one thing I was wondering is the common language for the literacy block, I think, is really valuable. Um, I'm wondering if that's something that can maybe be posted so that families also can use that common language, um, when we're working with our students?
That'd be great. Absolutely.
So, uh, thank you. Um, the other thing I was wondering is the shared reading assessments, um, I know that the last time you were here that I did have some concerns about the reading, um, and I'm just wondering, it, I know you guys, it says you shared them, but I'm just wondering, like, and now.
They're actually, we're doing it in two different ways.
Okay.
So, um, the, the Google Plus that Greg was talking about, um, that Mike is gonna be actually teaching the teachers how to do, we had the teachers in grade levels bring their, their literacy assessments and they all looked at them. And we're gonna have, we're gonna teach them in the April, I think it's April eleventh, April eighth, the April eighth, how to put those online with the Google, with the Google Plus so that they are shared and so they have that, like, that.
So they're positive.
That wealth, right.
Yeah, especially around some of the formative assessments.
Right. And then in addition, um, Jackie and Anne, the two reading, reading, um, coaches have created an entire literacy website. So there, there, there's so much information there so that any, any teacher can go to that. And if I need, you know, help with fluency or if I need help with their grade comprehension, there are all these things that, that are there that they, they can use. So one is kind of more of a professional, um, the expert one with the coaches and the other one is like the collaborative teachers, so they can have two different sources.
Okay. Okay. So I guess what I'm wondering is, and I don't know, maybe this is a question for you, Hutch, but I, I mean, I know there's no secret, like I can continue to be concerned about reading, particularly in the early grades. So I guess I'm just wondering, I know it's not all about tests and so on, but I think that our scores were low, hadn't have been low for a while. And so I guess I'm, what I'm wondering is, what are we doing to just address that? And I think the lesson plans are great and the common language and so on, but, um, as we continue to have a lack of, of any sort of additional support, not only for high need, but for kids who are sort of right there on grade level, but maybe lacking in confidence, um, who are, you know, sort of struggling a little bit, but don't meet the benchmarks of getting extra assistance, I guess I'm just wondering, like, what next? Like, what can we do as a committee? What's happening that we can do to support that?
I think one of the, that's a good question. I, I think one of the things we're doing is making sure that the data we have is consistent. And I know Mary just sent a, an email out two days ago or yesterday, um, regarding, uh, expanding the pilot that, that we were doing at Sargent regarding responding to the needs of, of, uh, certain students in the lower grades, uh, across a couple of other schools in the next, in the third trimester so that we can make sure that it's, everything, everybody's being measured in the same way and so that we can have the better data going into next year on, on students. Uh, a lot of it is making sure that the assessments that are used, are used consistently. So, because it's not about, my gut says this kid needs help. Uh, it's about, this is how the kid, uh, the student scored, because, um, assessment scores are important because it allows us to say, how are students doing? And if they're, if they're, if they're not doing as well, using the same comparative data across all schools, then what are we doing to address those students? What we have to do now is we only have so much, um, staff to address it and we have to prioritize the students that are scoring the lowest. Uh, and, um, as we are able to have more and more staff, obviously you can expand. I'd like to say that, uh, it'll never be enough. I mean, you can always, students can always benefit by more and more assistance, um, but I think, um, we're at a point where we're getting more consistent in the assessment and that judgment piece and also in keeping the data and having the comparative data so that, um, we are be able to prioritize who gets the assistance.
Zora, I think that, to your point too, I think the one thing that's important to mention is all the work that the coaches have done across the schools, because that tier-one intervention in that classroom is really where, when you have limited resources is where we're going to see the biggest bang, especially for those kids who might not stand out, um, you know, as a red flag, but they're right on the cusp. Those, you know, the, 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 you know, the older grades, the comprehension, the undergrads, the phonemic awareness and then the guided, the heavy guided reading, um, that's where it makes a difference. And that's, you know, the, when you can have coaches be able to do that. And I don't know if these guys mentioned, Mary, you might want to talk a little bit about, um, the course we're offering as well for elementary teachers, the reading coaches. Did we talk about this with you guys yet?
No, I was reading it, but.
Okay. And, um, I can let Mary talk a little bit about that, but I also want to be conscious of the time too, because we still have some middle school and high school folks as well.
Okay.
Do you want to tell, the reading course?
It's, it's already started. So we have, um, we have three courses planned, two this sem- this spring and one in the summer. And then we want to continue this. It's open to elementary teachers. Um, there's a, there's a cap on the course for twelve, twelve, elementary teachers to take the class and it's focusing on really good reading blocks. Um, there's, there's a focus on K to two with phonemic awareness and fluency and then three to five with comprehension. So the, um, the course filled up like that, we have a waiting list for the second one. We haven't opened up the third one in the summer yet, but this is a way to like raise the level of teaching in, in the regular classroom, like not including the intervention piece. So again, it's this constant building up of the, um, the tier-one that we're trying to address.
On top of the PD for everybody.
That, yeah, this is above and beyond.
Okay. Um, the only thing I'd like just to throw out there and, um, is I think that especially at the elementary level, we have such a wealth of families in the community who I think want to engage, so I don't know, I, I don't teach reading, I don't pretend to know how to teach reading, um, but I think if there are ways that we could think about as a district to maybe sort of harness some of that, that want to work in the schools and, and assist students where, I mean, I think about, like I went in kindergarten and, you know, parents worked at one of the centers and it allowed teachers, I think, more flexibility to maybe work with smaller groups to read and do that kind of thing. We are always short budget-wise and we're obviously clearly short people-wise to work in reading. So I think anything that we can do to be creative, um, would be wonderful. And I think too, it would just allow families to have a better connection to what is happening. I mean, again, when we go back to only fifty percent of our students are meeting benchmark, it's just, there's too many kids, I think, who are swimming in that water is where they just shouldn't be. So, anyway, um, other thoughts, um, for, same thing with math. I know you said you reviewed the, the concepts of math block. I think any kind of language that could be shared with families would be really valuable. And I love the idea of the vertical alignment. Um, I don't know if that's some sort of a document that can be shared or just, I think anything we can do with like the curriculum, the booklet things, just to talk about where things are going and, and how that progression is would be helpful. Um, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good ideas, Zora. Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing we need to talk about is, um, there was one professional development day that, well, North End of Middle School and the high school all along have been meeting on the two-hour days within their buildings and, um, they have their specific professional development needs that are being addressed. Uh, there was one day that we had vertical alignment with both the North End of Middle School and the high school where all teachers met in disciplines. And so while they were there, they looked at the courses and shared the courses offered from sixth grade through twelfth grade so that everybody could hear each other as to what they're teaching. And then they also shared grade-level expectations with a focus on the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade and what the expectations were for both. And in addition to that, they talked about best practice strategies that were used in the different disciplines as well. So that was basically what happened on that particular day and, um, we're now going to talk about the, the middle school professional development and bring up.
Mr. Wiggly, Mr. Salati, Mr. Richard.
Without the.
Guys, if you want to say, we don't need a microphone.
Yeah.
Just for the viewing audience at home.
They can tell you back there whether you do or not, they can hear you.
One, one of the advantages we have in North Andover of having a, um, building-based meeting is it's also a district-wide meeting whenever we meet at, as a grade level. So anytime sixth-grade teachers get together, we're talking about all the sixth-grade teachers in the district and there's a lot less, uh, talk on soccer fields about, uh, what are they doing in certain schools because we're all in one school. And we have, uh, weekly meetings where the first part of every meeting is, what's going on today in your classroom? And we're all have done a good job over the years of getting, uh, really aligned with what curriculum is going on. And a student anywhere now in sixth grade is working on greatest common factor and divisibility, no matter what teacher is standing in front of them. Um, so one of the things that we've worked on in our professional development is that Dr. McQuaid brought forth a protocol called the Cycle of Inquiry, um, from the School Reform Initiative, where each of our small grade-level, subject-specific cohorts could get together and try to identify a concern, a problem that's facing them in front of them with the kids in the classroom, something that, uh, is a question for them and follow a, uh, common cycle regardless of the grade level or the subject of how to identify what the problem is, do some research, collect some data, both from students and from professional journals of what, um, what could be done about it, uh, come up with a plan, implement that plan, look at the student work, reflect. And the cycle is that you then have another question available for you from what you learned from that data. So, um, that is one of the main professional development things we're doing, both during our weekly subject meetings and during our, um, Wednesday short-day professional development, to continue that flow to be a consistent, year-long process that, um, can not just be a one-shot thing. So that's one of the major, uh, professional development things we're doing. Ms. Richard?
Hello, everyone. Craig Richards, seventh-grade science at the middle school and also one of the facilitators. Uh, speaking to the, the day where the high school and the middle school got together, this is my seventh year in the district and I had yet to experience that until the fourteenth of January this past year. And I can't express to you enough how impactful that was, speaking for the middle school staff, and how useful and how positive it was to be able to sit down with the upper-grade teachers and just hear like, okay, we sent them off, how are they doing? What skills are we sending them with that are working? What can we work on? Just tremendous. And with Kara's help being the, the bridge from the gap from the middle school to the high school, I was able to work with Amy, they were able to talk about the, the goals of that meeting and what we were looking to get out of it prior to and do a little planning. And then the meeting was, was just, uh, it was phenomenal. I just hope that we can continue that vertical alignment, those discussions, and then extend it to the elementary schools. And that day also gave us to, Mr. Theresa, you mentioned this, how, you know, what's the, how, how's the public going to see this other than scores? Well, that day gave us the opportunity to have our eighth-grade teachers talk about the STEM, uh, science fair that's happening next week, it's Wednesday. And it, they invited the high school teachers to come down to be judges and high school students. And obviously the public is invited to that. So you can really see it's a community event, we're, it's going right through and hopefully again, we can extend that down the road to the elementary school teachers as well.
And that event was very successful last year.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Exhibition, yeah. Tremendous.
It was. It was very positive and, uh, kids seemed to like it. They had some fun and they're very able to, the pride they had to show off of what they've done and it's cool to see. The big thing, speaking to the challenges ahead, we have the National Standards for Science hitting the market next year officially, the NGSS, Next Generation Science Standards. And that for the middle school, from our perspective, um, there's some challenges there, uh, but with that, there's also some opportunities. We have a layered curriculum at this point. Life science in sixth grade, earth in seventh, physical in eighth. And the state, the director of science and technology, uh, Jake Foster, uh, they don't recommend one or the other, whether it be a layered cake approach like we're doing or a spiraled curriculum. They do recommend a spiraled curriculum. They just think it goes hand-in-hand with the new standards. So at the middle school, we're having the discussions and starting to do some research and looking at other districts. Okay, well, what is, what is successful? What's going to be the most successful strategy for our kids? Um, you know, I have my own opinions and so do the teachers at the, at the school and, um, we're having good, healthy discussions about that. And again, it's all funneling down to the students of the middle school. Uh, we do have a conference call scheduled in the near future with Jake Foster with just science teachers from North End of Public Schools to discuss what he thinks, you know, why, why the recommendation, why not the mandate and give them a little, uh, information of where we're at and what we're thinking. And, um, so hopefully we'll have one of those vertical alignment days in the near future and, um, we can now start planning for what we're, what we're looking to do.
And the state's been really helpful. Karen, in fact, um, I was working with her today. We're coordinating on, uh, some regional stuff because what the state, once they pass this, they'll give us three years to implement across the state. So it's an ongoing process, uh, and not only the collaboration of the folks at the middle school, but the opportunity for our science folks to collaborate with other district, uh, teams from other district is going to be a nice opportunity. So this summer, uh, we're offering, uh, our teachers in-service credit to be part of a group, a regional group, which is, you know, you don't want to reinvent the wheel if you have, you know, a lot of different ways to go at it. So it's kind of exciting, so.
Have any time left?
Sorry about that.
My name is Peter Swedley. I'm an eighth-grade English teacher at the middle school. I'm also a facilitator. Basically, I'm just tying it all together. Mary and I have worked side-by-side for a couple of years now, so it's.
More than a couple.
I just. So we've had the ability to have meetings on the ELA department. We've been very lucky to have a, a solid bridge from eighth to ninth for quite some time. I think it's been a good trickle-down effect for the middle school. It has forced us to align our curriculum much more. We're attempting to take that a step further using the technology. DJ Sternavens is in the middle school for the first year. He's running a, uh, digital literacy class. It is so invaluable, I, I can't even speak to it. We only have one netbook lab in the eighth grade and I've never seen a year where the three eighth-grade English teachers, we are rotating that netbook lab through and through and through, not just on writing, doing web quests and working through different things. Obviously, you know, Kathy DeTroy and Francie Millu are incredible. Millu are incredible. Whenever we're in trouble, they are sprinting down to our room at a moment's notice, helping us make sure everything's aligned. Now with the new internet access that we have, we're tying in. And that Google Classroom is now allowing us to share work, student to student, student to teacher, teacher to teacher, through different grade levels. Because what we can do now is instead of having, all right, well, we're going to look at student work today. Who's bringing eight copies of this paper photocopied and make sure the names off it and this and that? Once you set an assignment in Google Classroom and the student goes in, the folder's automatically set up in the teacher. And the teacher's kind of like a mailbox for us. And it's beautiful. You go in, and I'm sitting at my desk. You would think, well, depends who you talk to, that I'm not working hard, that I'm sitting over at my desk because there's 25, 28 other kids. I have all 28 documents right in front of me. Then to finish a document, the idea of like passing a paper around and editing, you teach them how to work the Google Doc system, and now they can share it. I had a situation last week where they were just doing a compare and contrast paper a couple of weeks ago. And in groups of six, they shared their document just within their group. And they learned the difference between editing and commenting and the different areas you can go in. Next thing you know, you've got kids like typing comments. It was a silent environment, but the keyboards were clicking away. And it's that ability to share because now we can take those papers and we can go to the ninth grade and say, all right, this is what our kids are producing. Is this good enough? What do we need to do? And go down to the seventh grade and say, all right, this is what we're getting. You know, could you hit this area or that area? And I guess that's why I'm pushing the technology piece to tie it all together because it's, it's really an experience. I mean, and you two have been on the job as long as Mrs. Sternavens, which I believe is six months. So if this is what we've done in six months, tying us top to bottom and side to side, you know, I can't wait till we actually have a summit to catch our breath and get back together again. It's going to be quite, it's going to be incredible.
One of the great things about the professional development being so often, as Mr. Clark said, was that you're able to sort of have quicker generation time on ideas that I'm more of a rookie with the Google Classroom. But social studies, language arts teacher used it, showed his partner. She brought it to the math department. One of the science teachers used it to do a writing piece. And so it's really that peer learning that we have to take the experts from within and sort of share it faster and faster instead of just one.
This is viral technology.
Yeah, for sure.
We hope. We're trying. I mean, it's a work in progress. But when you get three eighth-grade English teachers that are now doing the same assignment and sharing it and working it, that builds that commonality, you know? Because I live in town. I'm on a couple of soccer fields myself. And you're on that side and I'm on this side. But we both have people coming up and talking to us. And, you know, all you want to do is watch a kid try to kick the ball and not fall. And it's a really cool concept, both with the parents and the kid and the ball. So it's one of those things that it is bringing about more positivity. But it's just going to take more time, you know? Still got a lot of building to do. But we're going to get there.
I think it's exciting. I mean, the amount of work that's been done in, you know, like you said, the last six months and just the foundation of everything that we kind of haven't had before. And I think we've tried to do, and, you know, it's just involved passing the papers back and forth and kind of sharing it that way. And now just being able to share it so virtually, so quickly is awesome. One quick question, and I don't know if it's really even going to matter that much, but next year, we'll have one additional sixth-grade teacher. So do you, how do you, do you see that creating any form of challenge? Or is that just going to enhance kind of how that works?
Speaking as a sixth-grade teacher?
That's why I asked.
Yeah. I, I'm anxious, excited to sort of see the new format. We've been two-person teams for so long.
Right.
And it's many voices at some of our meetings. And some of our time gets split at the sixth-grade level between an upcoming science assessment and a math concern. And we think that, and I believe this is Dr. McQuaid's idea, is that by having each teacher be an expert on one subject, you're able to have a more focused discussion. Meeting with four math teachers instead of six or seven.
Right.
Might, may actually be less cooks in the kitchen.
Right. Yeah.
What is the structure going to be in the sixth grade?
I'm not revealing anything.
No.
Yeah. We currently have one four-person team and five two-person teams. And it's transitioning with the addition of a 15th teacher to three four-person teams and a three-person team where the three-person team is going to have a math teacher, language arts teacher, and a science teacher. And they will all share the social studies curriculum.
Right. And that's why I was trying to figure out, you know, how that.
Right.
But I think your point is really valid. And if you've got somebody who is really focusing on the math and, you know, they're, they're able to, you know, focus with, let's say, four other teachers and really kind of hone in on that, I think that's going to be great.
I'm, I'm the math teacher on the four-person team right now. And I have found the advantage of really being able to design that lesson during my planning period instead of I need to design this lesson for today, but also think about the science review I'm going to do that is advantageous. More, more students, more people in front of me, for sure.
Sure.
So.
And with the Common Core, some of the work of simply the cross-discipline, you know, you may be, when you're talking about reading or you're talking about ELA, you know, you can easily do that with texts from science, from social studies. And, you know, some of that work, that's where the collaboration plays in. And that's really that next little step. And you see it across the different levels. But that's only going to increase and be enhanced the more we can collaborate, especially in real time with the technology.
So I'd like to ask you a favor, of the three of you, or everybody.
Right.
On all those groups. So I'm really encouraged about this bottom-up application of technology. I think that's probably the only way it's really going to work. So what we need is, we need feedback as to how to help you do that better. What is, you know, other than just more? You know, what kind of things do we need to be helping you with? You know, we've been trying to, over the last few years, write technology plans and have failed because it's not a top-down problem. It's a bottom-up problem. You know, you need to tell us what you need to do your jobs better. And, you know, it can be simple things, can be complicated things, whatever it is.
The first three things on the list are more.
Yeah, more. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the thing that got us off was on the first step was, Mr. DJ Servants gave a, they gave us one of the professional development days to let him take a roomful of teachers. And it was just like, probably like 15 of us, because it was just testing the wires. And he was like, this is what I'm doing. He used his smart board. And I mean, I was overwhelmed fairly quickly, but at least I was in a roomful of people who were drowning with me. But it was 15 of us that got introduced to it on a professional development day. So I understand that there's a drive for professional development days to be in your subject matter and things of that nature. And we all understand that. But sometimes to be able to take that sidetrack, to get that time and let, have people know that it's being used appropriately. And it's being, and it's not just sitting in front of a computer for two hours. We took that, we, a lot of us brought it, there was, a lot of the English teachers and a few social studies that were in there. And we were the ones who are kind of now trying to drive that forward.
Well, I think it's a big help when you have somebody like DJ who can show you what the possibilities are. You know, if you don't know, haven't used it and don't know that much about it, you don't know what you can do with it. You get somebody like him, an expert.
And he's patient.
You know.
He was looking out at us and I, you couldn't miss it.
Yeah.
And he was great. And he was like, hey, you know, we go, and I'm always here. But I guess that speaks to his personality. So.
He loves, he loves to teach. He even grew up.
He's tremendous.
Even grew up.
He's even done some work at the elementary.
Really?
Kathy Detroit, I mean, I can't say enough about those two.
Really? That's great. That's great. How wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last but not least, North Endover High School.
Come right on.
Yeah, yeah, use that one.
So the, the North Endover High School Professional Development, they, that has been done throughout the whole school, and then the departments have done things on their own. But there's been a lot of similarities. So basically, all departments have conducted department meetings where they've looked at student work, following protocols. And these are done so that they can improve instruction and assessments. And the protocols that Kara is going to talk, is going to talk about in a minute are the Atlas Tuning, Looking at Data, and the Calibration Protocol. We've discussed, they've discussed the application of the Habits of Learning rubric and how to like differentiate that from the actual what students, no one are able to do. They've examined the critical thinking that we talked about with, at the very beginning in rubrics, lessons, and assessments. They've aligned grading practices within the department so that if you're looking at a paper, you're correcting the paper in the same way, especially like with essays and things like that. And we, they completed course unit documents so that all the courses have unit documents that are documented for them. And integrated, which is my favorite, integrated writing across the curriculum. And the math teacher is going to talk about how she's integrated writing across the curriculum for us.
So as Mary mentioned, two of the protocols that have been employed by the English Department at North Endover High School are the Atlas Looking at Data and the Calibration II Protocol. The Atlas Looking at Data Protocol yields a structured conversation about implications for teaching and assessment. So at the high school, we've broken down into grade-level cohorts to study and analyze data collected on common assessments. And we've been able to examine questions, including what steps could be taken next, what strategies are most effective, what else would we like to see happen, and what kind of assignments and assessments could provide this information? And what does the conversation make you think in terms of your own practice and teaching and learning in general? Additionally, the Looking at Data Protocol has allowed us at the, in the English Department to evaluate and tune our data collection tool. The English Department has also effectively employed the Calibration II Protocol. And under the structure of the Calibration II Protocol, the English Department continues to ensure that we are providing students with consistent feedback on their writing and that we are employing common language in instruction and feedback. Additionally, this protocol engenders conversations that enable us to continue to tune our writing rubrics at all grade levels.
So if you look on the last page of the packet that Mary and Kara gave you, we, I, included in there is the scoring guide that we created as a math department. So it's preceded by a paragraph that the kids get on every writing assignment and then a scoring guide. It's very simple to start with because this is something new in the math department that we're trying to employ. So we didn't want to go too complex at the start. And then hopefully, as we move forward from year to year and keep implementing this, we can add to the scoring guide. But as a high school, we implement, we took the critical thinking, strategic objective, and we implemented that across the curriculum. What we find in math is that kids sometimes turn into robots and they memorize the steps to solve a problem. And they don't really know why they're doing it. They don't know why they're adding five to each side. So to solve an equation. So what we've stressed this year is being able to write those steps down and use proper math vocabulary. So it gets them thinking mathematically why they're doing this, what's the vocab behind it, and they're writing in sentences. And then just writing in any subject just makes them a better communicator overall, especially in this age of texting and everything else.
I just really enjoyed seeing the problems that you kind of put out there in the examples. Really good. Just fun to see kind of what the kids are doing. And I can honestly say, in high school, I don't think I could have ever tackled.
So that, just to show you where they, that last one, just so everyone can have an idea, that CPal drill one one, that's an MCAS question. So that is what our 10th graders need to do and do, because, you know, in order to graduate, they have to pass. So that's what our 10th graders need to do. So they're expected to do that in 10th grade before they graduate. So that's an open response question from the MCAS. Just to give you an idea, if you've never looked at that document. Not multiple choice.
I did debate whether or not it was or not.
Did show you work.
Yeah. Awesome. So it looks great.
This is fabulous. As we have the dialogue, how are we ensuring that we're also focusing on both extremes, the high needs and the students that really need to be pushed, you know, different, personalized or differentiated? How are we handling that as well during our collaboration time?
I'd have to say in many of the protocols, it's looking at, you know, all students. So it might be examining, you know, what are, how did our strongest students do? Are they scoring well? What can we do to push them? How about the middle group? How about the low? So a lot of the protocols have that implicitly in there.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then to finally wrap it up, we go back to the beginning. And so all this work together is kind of a cycle. And it goes back to what the vision of the school district is, you know, for great learners, for people that are college and career-ready. And then the theory of action is how we're doing this with collaboration, with student-based education, with looking at student work, with common assessments, and putting that critical thinking piece in there to get the best that we can possibly get.
Can I ask, let me ask my standards-based education question. So Dr. Hutchinson and a number of people educated us a couple of years ago on standards-based education when we were trying to do the middle school change. And it seemed like the, why weren't we always doing this? Why didn't we always use this approach? And I got concerned that then we had kind of lost that because, you know, that didn't quite work. And everybody got afraid of saying that anymore. And you couldn't say standards-based because, I don't know why. How did, how does it, how is it reflected in what this statement really means? How, other than Common Core and standards that everybody looks at and uses? The thing that appealed to me about standards-based education was we actually just want to measure what students know at the end of a period, and if they know it, no matter how they got there, that's what we want. We don't, we're not averaging things. We're not penalizing them. We're not doing all that other stuff we've traditionally done in education, which is, you know, if you get, if you start out your trimester with Ds and Fs, you're pretty much screwed to get an A in that course. But you could if you knew the stuff at the end. I mean hypothetically, if you figured it all out, if you straightened out and got it at the end. So to me, that was the enormous appeal of standards-based education is students would actually be encouraged to learn, not give up halfway through going, well, I'll never get a good grade here because I'm screwed. I screwed myself, right? How's that all fitting in here? How does that work in what we're trying to do here?
You know, yesterday, we were at the Sargent School doing a learning walk. And one of the classrooms that I went into, it was, kids were doing a long division quiz, basically. And so they were working at the long division quiz, and the teacher was at her desk. And when they were done, they came back with the quiz. And they showed it to her, and she looked at it. And she would just point out, like, almost, you need to check this, you need to check this, you need to check this. And if they, if they had it wrong, they went back to their seat and they worked on it until they came back and they got it right. In the meantime, the people that had gotten it right were on to the next thing. And I was sitting there, I was amazed because it was these, these, it was a fourth-grade class. These fourth graders, they're not giving up. They're going back. They're learning it. And they're, they're getting, they're leaving there with having that, reached that potential. So that's just a small, like 15-minute snippet of what this kind of standards-based is.
Wonderful.
It's just, and to have that, it's like, you know, there's no failure in a sense. It's like you get it, and you go to the next step, and your next step, and you keep on going.
I mean, I think that's, we must understood the concept. Education is based on failure. You know, I mean, if we were all so smart, we could just do it right the first time. You know, we wouldn't have to go to school at all. You know, everybody would just have it. But failure should not be something that is, is a bad thing. You know, that's the way we learn. We try it. It doesn't quite work. We go back to our desk, we correct the problem, we come back. I mean, we get it. So, and that's what appeals to me about standards-based education is it sounds like it really is that concept more routinized, more organized. But system-wide, right? PK through 12 is.
I think too, that's.
Thanks for including the PK.
I would just say that I feel blessed to be able to actually build, be part of this team. I'm honored because.
You know, we're a pretty lean operation. And not only the curriculum coordinators and the work they've done this year, because it's been a great partnership with all of us. But I really have to, you know, always, the principal's always working hard. But the teacher leaders who have stepped up in these facilitator roles have made all the difference in the training. I mean, this was beyond their regular school day. They came and trained for another 12 and a half hours after school throughout the course of the fall. You know, and it's the teacher leaders, and it's the teachers who have bought in that really make the difference around this collaboration. So to see that level of cooperation amongst teachers across the district really bodes well for the future for us. And I'm just feel thrilled to not only be partnered with these two guys, but all 22 facilitators across the district and disciplines. So.
Definitely a high level of professionalism.
So, and I thank the teachers for coming out tonight. I know you guys probably have to go home and correct those.
They were doing it in Google Docs as you were talking.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right.
So much for the 15 minutes, Mr. Devon. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
This is, well worth it.
Yeah.
Well worth it.
It's a great to focus on teaching and learning again.
It's refreshing.
Yeah.
Gets my heart rate up a little bit, but it's refreshing.
All right. We are going to, I'm just making sure we're all set. We're going to jump to 8B, which is the mid-cycle review superintendent.
Budget status, 7A?
I think we heard it.
Didn't we hear that?
Well, I just want to also say, if you haven't noticed, Jim's absent tonight. He's attending, his, his son moved on in a graduate competition. So Jim is, wanted to attend the presentation that he's doing. So he's down, I'm just going to say in warmer weather right now. So we, the last time we reported, I was a week ago. Part of the, but our own budget status is we are, we are looking at specific areas right now comparatively. I have a chart here. Just trying to work on it this afternoon. We're looking at, how are we comparing? Because what we still have available are, for instance, our substitution accounts, our unit attendant accounts, and our long-term subaccounts. And we're seeing how those are tracking. And also, we have a quarter left. Believe it or not, we have four months left. So we are, our next, we have a leadership meeting. We had to walk through leadership meeting, which are critical to do. So our next leadership meeting is actually next Wednesday. So we'll do some follow-up on, on this next Wednesday. But we have. So we'll do some follow-up on this next Wednesday, but we haven't, again, it's just trying to track and see, I try to identify areas where we can make, we continue to connect with town manager to discuss any changes, but typically you're not going to see any change in a week, so.
Right.
Yeah, we're continuing to identify where we might.
My sense is the message was, it's bad, it can be getting worse, and we're looking at alternatives. I just want to make sure that we stay on top of that. And if there are decisions that need to be made, that we, you know, we have, we have time to look at those options.
Yep.
Thank you.
So jumping back to 8B, mid-cycle review for superintendent calls.
Want me to introduce myself?
Sorry.
Do you? Well, the purpose of mid-year review, as stated in documentation last week, was I gave you what, my reflections on the mid-year. And you requested the rubric that was put together for the, for the focus areas. So the purpose of this discussion right now is, if you would like to see me focus a little more on certain areas, point out on that, point that out. I don't know if it requires a vote, but it, through the discussion, I think the purpose is to get a sense of where might you like to see some further evidence by the end of the year.
So there's, there's no motion, so it's just discussion. So Mrs. Warren, I saw your pen going, so.
Yeah, I think I would love to see, for one, or whatever, IB2 and IB3. I'd love to see some, some more evidence there, if possible. That's quality of effort and work and diverse learners' needs. I know, it sounds like from what we're talking about, professional development, those are things that are being worked on. So I think it'd be great to see some evidence of that. And as I mentioned before, just, I think where the work is being done with common vocabulary and common expectations and things, I think anything that we can do to not only create that, I guess, those common expectations across the district for, for teachers and for the schools, but also for families, just so that we can continue to support on both ends what's happening. And I think if, you know, if we could see examples of exemplary work and high expectations and how diverse learners are being, their needs are being met, type of thing, anything that we can do, I think, to bring that connection between home and school would be really valuable.
Very good point.
For myself, 2E1, fiscal systems. We had a little bit of a discussion, but not, I think we could have more about the, taking the next step from performance-based budgeting, from program-based budgeting to performance-based budgeting. We talked a little bit about that, but I think, I'd like to see a little bit more information from Assistant Superintendent Millian and the team on sort of what that means and what particular areas that you picked out for your, your start on that, you know, and how that's going. Sort of what you're, really what the protocol is. What are you, what are you using for, thinking about for a protocol? And then, under communication, we have talked, now, this year is probably the second year, maybe even the third year, we talked about trying to do some upgrades, for example, on the district website. And it's still, it could use some help, right? Both in terms of currency, frequency, and accuracy, but, you know, just some rethinking of that, you know, to Mr. Trucey's point, that could be one good place for the community to get information about any of these subjects, any of these topics that we talk about in more depth. And, you know, while Mr. Gilligan has put a lot of good information out there, sometimes it takes a bit of a sleuthing to find it. It's not that easy.
Mr. Grant is working on it.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just suggesting that could be evidence, concrete evidence in that, in the communication area. Because I think that's a, you know, could be one of our major platforms to communicate with the parents and the community. So those would be two areas I'd be interested in.
And for me, I think echoing Mr. Lifford's comment on 2E1, I would really love to see some evidence that we've seeked alternative funding sources. I know that's a, an exemplary criteria, but I think that's something that we really need to start striving for, given how lean we are and how volatile our demands are going to be this year for sure, and it's probably not going to get any better in the coming years. So I'd love to see us, I know we had a grant writer, love to hear a readout on how we did with that. Is that a position that we might want to consider accelerating in funding, or is that something that just didn't work out? And if not, why? And the other, the other comment is, and thank you for reminding us of what we've established. I don't see any indication to change any, add any, or move any. I think we're still on, on track for what we thought, what we needed to move forward with.
I think the thing I was thinking was, I think the walkthroughs that you all do, it's a really valuable piece and insight into, beyond test scores, but about what's really happening in the schools. If there's any sort of way to get some sort of like summative, you know?
I get you.
Yeah, without artifacts.
Pointing to particular teachers.
Well, right, just, you know, to be able to say, you know, after, you know, a quarter semester of doing these walkthroughs, here's some of the great things that we're seeing, here's some areas that we are going to continue to work on in professional development, just a little bit of.
The vignettes?
I think, right, because I think we do focus a lot on the test scores, but at the end of the day, it's about, you know, good teaching, to have effective learnings. I think anything that we can do to just give that narrative of what is happening and, not, not necessarily for like a criticism, but just to be able to understand sort of where we're headed and what the plan is.
Can I just piggyback on that real quick? I, it could be because I'm home this year, but I enjoy hearing my kids when, you know, I come home, say, Dr. Hutchinson was in my class today, or I saw Mr. Gilligan, you know, in the school. And I know that I am hearing that more, and maybe it's just they know who you are a little bit more, or a little bit better, because they're a little bit older. And they see me more too. So they might be telling you that, too. So I know that that's a thing that at least the kids are really noticing as well, in addition to, I'm sure, the teachers, and they appreciate it.
These two guys are seeking out your kids, that's what Dr. is saying.
Yeah, I know. Stalkers, exactly. Make sure McDevitt's kids see us. Right. Do you have more? I just wanted to piggyback on your.
No.
Okay. The other thing that I would just like to kind of highlight a little bit is the continuous learning of the staff. You know, I think one of the things that we just started to hear about when the teachers kind of presented was the additional classes and opportunities that they have for, not just sharing ideas, but, you know, after-school classes, summer things like that, which I'm sure probably happened a little bit beforehand, but to hear that there's a waitlist for those is just absolutely exciting. I mean, when it has to do with making an impact. And I don't know how much more of that we're doing this year in comparison to last year, but I think it's, I think it's absolutely the right direction, so.
Well, not to be redundant, but the communication piece, I think, is, is critical to me, because obviously my kids aren't in the school system yet. But as someone who's been active in town for many, many years, there are some things that, you know, the school departments doing that, I just not aware, not aware of over the years. And I think getting the message out, like, the presentation we had today was, we all agree, very professional. The enthusiasm amongst, amongst these teachers is palatable. And I just don't think the community understands and knows, and I'm wondering better ways to do that. And, you know, obviously, the next superintendent coming on, on board, you know, I'd love to hear her ideas on that. And maybe it's, it's simple stuff, like, you know, doing more public meetings, going to the senior center, just letting people know that it's more than just reading what the MCAS scores in the paper. Because that's, unfortunately, you know, we're such a, you know, results-driven society, we look at these, these, these numbers and they think that's, that's the school system right there. And it's really not, you know, it's not at all. And I know in the short time I've been here, it's been very eye-opening to see the kind of things that we're doing in the classroom. So that's the one thing I want to focus on going forward.
Anything else? All right. I would like to request that the next item, which we have under new business, which is 9A, which is the first reading of the proposed changes to policy FF, that we actually somewhat table that for next week. We had a little bit of discussion on that last week as we kind of looked at what some of those changes would be. And then I think the information kind of came out to you guys late this afternoon. I don't know how much time you guys had to really kind of take a look and think it through.
Not next week, no.
I meant next meeting, you're right, you're right. Yeah, I think that 19th or something?
Yeah. For that, I'd like to study that a little bit more.
Okay. All right, any?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So tabled, all right. So jumping on to 9B, the first reading of the proposed policy changes, proposed changes to policy JCA, assignment of students to schools. Again, just a first reading. Last week at our discussion, we talked a little bit about this and there was some redlining that was done on it. And so some changes were made, and they are.
Sign page 39 of 39.
At the back of your packet.
Last page.
Last page.
Last page.
Yep.
Who did the redlining on this, Mr. McDevitt?
Combination of probably four people. Dr. Hutchinson, Bezaari, myself, and Mrs. Warren.
So these, these are all or things, then like, you don't even meet all the criterias, you need to meet one of the criterias?
Yes.
Just variables, yeah.
Right, it's on a checklist.
So it's an or kind of.
For any of the following reasons.
Any of them, yeah.
Right. And, sorry, I'm going to interpret, there are a couple of changes were made because they were really kind of no longer applied in how they were worded or phrased. So that was, as we looked at the policy in general, we really kind of had to do some updates to it. So that's some of them as well.
Hypothetical, Mr. Superintendent, when a child or parents have joint physical custody of a child, and I could think of one example off the top of my head, I know of a couple that has joint, it's rarity, mostly people have joint legal custody and joint physical custody is not granted in a lot of cases, but where there is, how do they decide and are there instances where they flip-flop from, from year to year?
From school to school?
Well, my, my point is, obviously, you know, family situations are challenging for all of us from time to time. But I mean, where couples have, you know, split up, divorced, and, you know, you do have the situation where parents are sharing custody, they could be living in the same town, they can live in different, different elementary school districts.
In the same town or different?
In the same town, in the same town, but, you know, one day, or, you know, they get in a fight with mom and they want to go live with dad, and one day they get in a fight with dad, they want to live with mom. How, I could, I mean, I know of one situation like that in town, but I'm wondering if that's something we should think about.
I mean, in those types of cases, we work very closely with the, the parents. We also try to focus on what's best for the students, so the best, although the student might be jumping around high, between schools, I mean, between households, it's best for them to stay in the same school.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's typically what we do. There are few situations where if one parent lives out of town, one person lives in town, as long as they lay their head in a bed, in the majority of the time, in the town, they can come to school here. Those are, those are the, and those, those cases typically occur more at the secondary level, that come to our light versus at the elementary level.
Yeah. But again, like, obviously, we need to have policies on this stuff.
Yep, sure.
But I definitely think there are those, and there are just very few exceptions, thank God. But there should be, I know this is just the first reading, but I do think the superintendent should have a little bit of discretion here when those kind of extenuating circumstances arise.
We do have it, we do have it. But, and there's two other policies that we looked at last time that we took out, because there's no changes. They're about, they were about the attendance of, and we have a lot of discretion. The one in charge of placement of students is the assistant superintendent. So as far as placement around schools, but week, in the end, there's one line that says the superintendent can make a decision even to move kids from one school to the other. I mean, a lot of it has to do with space, but we work very closely with families to do what's best for the children. The only glitch that typically comes up is if there is absolutely no room in the school. But as far as family situations, I think we resolve those pretty well.
Well, as long as, as long as the policy allows you to have that discretion, and obviously it's not in this document, I have it in front of me right now. But my fear is sometimes, you know, we have this big fiber, and you've heard me lament about this before, this huge policy book, and some things we follow, some things we don't follow as much. And, you know, this is a situation where it could be a very tough situation, but it sounds like, you know, you accommodate for that already.
Yep.
The only question I had was, why is the busing, why is the permission done by the school committee? The very last sentence.
It's a good question. I don't know, in the time that I've been here, if there's ever been a busing consideration brought before us, but Ms. Lifford, I think you've been here the longest.
You think?
But what I'm wondering, just the procedure or policy, why would it be the school committee?
The school committee can change, the school committee is the one that changes, for instance, districts of schooling, as far as would change the limits of the mileage limits. You know, I, not that I've ever seen this done, but they could grant exceptions based on limits. We above already do it. If it's convenient and it's along the route, we pick them up.
Pick them up. So if someone took an out-of-neighborhood place, for example, you know, it's similar to that, we don't provide transportation, but if we move somebody, you know, we'd have, it was an involuntary move and we had to move somewhere.
No, I, I get what it is. I just, I don't know why the school committee is approving bus routes.
It's not a bus route.
It's not a bus route.
Just giving back.
Because I think that's a financial discussion.
Okay.
Right. Because if we did provide transportation, it would definitely increase the traffic.
I think, I think examples, oh, we're going to provide transportation to anybody over half a mile. And that's fine, that's a huge financial discussion.
Right.
But that's.
One of the things I'm, I'm struggling with, I need to reread this a couple of times because I, I think I understand what it's trying to say, but some of these references are over four decades old. Do we have model language that is currently out there that, you know, just want to make sure as we go through the evaluation, we're also making sure that the cross-references to the statutes are accurate? If that hasn't been done yet, we probably need to do that.
We can put that down, we'll review that.
1974 Act?
73, as adopted.
Wasn't that one ago?
Hey, I remember the 70s.
I started teaching that year.
Oh, you remember the 70s.
74, I don't remember.
Remember the 60s.
All right, we will verify those for our next meeting. I think one of the things, you know, that we really talked about, and I think we kind of strengthened the language a little bit, was really trying to prioritize for families who were already in a school and had another sibling who kind of came along, that they had that priority to attend that school. Versus a new family moving in.
Do we think that's space, as space is available, or, and that's what I'm having trouble with three, are we recommending that if a student, if a family requests it, we will send another student out to accommodate that request?
No, I think there's that space available.
You're just trying to prioritize it.
We're not, we're not guaranteeing it.
No guarantee.
However, we are, we are, we are putting a, a much more heightened emphasis on that than we, than we have, which hopefully would allow that student to be put in there.
Reasonable effort to accommodate.
So do we want to add?
Someone had someone in a special education program that attended one school and then they had a sibling.
I understand what we're trying to do, but it says, in this scenario, siblings of this, siblings of this student, student will be given first option to attend the same North Andover school as their sibling.
Do we want to add if space is available? Is that what you're saying?
That's my concern.
Okay.
This is, this is change from a, you know, as space available to, no, 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 this means you will move them in now.
So here, here's the counterargument. I mean, we're now looking to. I mean, we're now looking to have one family have children in two different schools.
Well.
As opposed to a brand-new family moving in that says, you know what, there's a school half a mile down the block, and that's kind of, that, that's where there's space.
I understand what you're saying. They're talking about just they're, they're moving into an attendance area, they're going to their attendance area school.
So if I have a family in, in, in a school, and their child is in, let's say, first grade, and they're already established at, let's say, the Franklin, and another sibling comes along, but they happen to live in the Thompson district, then they would have priority in the Franklin district so that both children can go to school in the same district. And if another family came along that was brand-new to that school, no other siblings or anything like that, and there wasn't space, then when it was time to say, we don't have space, it's that other fam, it's that family who, who happens to live in Franklin that might be assigned to Thompson. It's, it's putting priority so that families have one school to go to in the morning.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. I think there's two things that we're talking about right now. One is what Mr. Gross said, which is, I think the way this reads, I think that his, the way that he interpreted it could be right in that, that the sibling would have priority over any of the student at that school, because it says first option, period.
That doesn't, that doesn't sound like our intent.
No, and I don't think that is the intent.
Okay.
So I think, I mean, isn't that what you said, Mr. Gross?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think, reading it again, I think that I, I think it can be interpreted that way. And then what you're talking about is if there's space in a sibling versus a new move?
So the siblings have first option to attend that, so that they then have full priority?
Over people who are already there?
They're not already there, they're going to.
No, no, but that's, what I'm saying is, that's not what this says, though.
They may be moving there, or they may be requesting to go there as well.
But we're talking about space available.
Right, right, right.
The way it reads now, you could interpret it to be that even a student who is there currently, that the sibling would have first option, period.
I, I don't read it like that.
But I think you can.
And that makes no sense, but.
No, I, I think the whole point of policy is just to make sure that it, it says what we're trying to say.
Right, right, I know, I hear what you're saying.
You may, you may reference simply if there is available space.
Yeah, that's what I, that's.
Yeah, we can, we can try to hash it out now, this is first reading, we can put edits in and get it to Bezz.
Why don't we do that? Do edits and get it back to Bezz.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I think that first one is just incredibly broad, and it could be, I mean, my opinion of these policies is, okay, we, we have it, and someone can wave in front of them and say, hey, listen, according to this, I can get my child moved because it's in the best interest of my child. Well, who, who says what's in the best interest of child? You? Us? The parent?
Well, it says that they may be granted from the superintendent. It doesn't say that they, that they will get what they.
Right, right. I understand that, at the end of the day, but I just think if this needs to be read in conjunction with another, another policy, that we should look at them all at the same time. And again, I think you, you may have looked at, but to me, the policy is, is a starting point, and I think it's just a very broad statement, if, if the change appears to be in the interest of the child or of the school. I mean, has experience dictated here involuntary assignments?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yep.
And the parents go willingly?
Not always.
Yeah, yeah.
They understand a lot in the end, but we've had involuntary assignment.
And I guess you.
A space-based problem, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's typically, well, see, typically where you see it is, is at the kindergarten level. It's, you know, if someone replies, applies for out-of-neighborhood placement, they get it. They know that's year-to-year, depending on space, and a sibling, this typically happens if you have someone placed in one of the district's special ed programs.
I can understand the space, that the space argument, because that, that is, it's not, it's not reflective of their child. But I'm wondering with invol, if involuntary assignment based on whether it's the teacher's relationship with the child, or the child's behavior, I mean, talk to me about like how, how the frequency of that.
Very infrequent.
Yeah, and it's not, I can't say that I've ever had the experience in setting it as an elementary in, in this role, it's never an existing student. If the involuntary is typically.
Yeah, and that, that part wouldn't be involuntary as such, that typically is worked out, and we can say, okay, this is for the best interests of the student, they're going to go to this school. And it's typically worked out with the family.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All right. So we will, I believe, go to public comment.
It's on the agenda.
I don't think there's anything else on the agenda.
We've reached the end of the agenda.
There was a good comment, actually, but I am working on it. So my name is Marty, and Kate Perry, I'm specifically here for, Gilligan, can you put that back up for me?
Oh.
Sorry.
Yep.
For JCA three, Mr. Trissey, I know you weren't here last week, but I am in that family that falls into that category, where I have a first grader at the Franklin because he's in a program, there was no room for my daughter in kindergarten, so she's now at the Thompson. So I have two kids in two different buildings. So I think what Mr. McDermott was trying to say, and the point that I was trying to make, is that siblings should be able to follow siblings, not just special education siblings, just all siblings. So if there's a sibling in the building, there's, they would be first priority, whether they have a sibling in a program, or that's their neighborhood school. And then people who would sort of get last dibs, I guess you could say, are students that have no affiliation, have never entered kindergarten, have no siblings or any connections to a specific elementary school. That way, for someone like me, there might have been space for my kindergartner, because somebody who had never been to kindergarten before could have possibly gone to another building, instead of me having kids in two different schools.
Mr. Chair, a point of clarification, relative to the family or relative to the student? I'm just trying to get clarity.
What do you mean?
You say, first dibs at kindergarten, so.
Meaning like, if you have a first-time kindergartner, and you have no siblings in the school system whatsoever, you either just moved here, or this is your first kid ever entering elementary school, there's zero affiliation with your neighborhood school at that point, other than that's your neighborhood school, you don't have any siblings there, whether they're in a program or just a typical sibling in the building.
Okay.
Then they would maybe be the last person on the totem pole, instead of bumping out siblings of kids that are already into the school system at that point.
Thanks for clarification.
And that have to go to that particular school, because that's where the program is based.
Right.
That's it, I hope that makes.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other public comment? All right. Comments from the chair, from the committee?
Good.
All right. My only comment is Saturday night is probably one of the most exciting nights for me, and that is the sweetheart kindergarten and first grade daughter dance, or girl dance. So I am excited to go and do my best to try to dance and, and pretend not to embarrass my daughter, so.
There you go.
That is all I have.
So we have daylight savings coming up?
Yes.
So check your fire detectors, or your smoke detectors, change the batteries.
All right. Any other motions?
So now that that's sort of pushed aside, and you're going to review it, when will that actually be voted on? Will it still be the 19th or a different date?
Should be the 19th.
It would.
Yeah.
So the chair moved to adjourn?
So a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.